Oh, I'm mad at you.
Hey, case I need to get you some hang up with the.
I'm gonna sit down here where I can pick the phone.
Um, that is a good idea.
Thanks, thank you.
What's your name?
I didn't get up. Come down my way.
He tells me when Bruce is here, he can't get me and Bruce both, and I said we'll focus on Bruce. Bruce is out here.
Perfect position, he likes getting it all down on you, mommy.
Hey, I was checking. Okay, alrighty.
We might come in a little.
He probably did.
He's not a bird. He said he'd be here in two minutes. Who will miss him, Willie?
And Alice. Miss Alice.
Where's Miss Alice? There's Willie, I was about to call you. Bruce will be here in just a minute.
We just had a raise down the mountain.
Did you win it?
I did it.
Did you get a ribbon? Y'all were just basically on time, weren't you?
Brent, did you have to be there?
Mike's online.
Yeah, I can go back to phone speaker here. Uh, no, there was a section in the work session.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, can you hear us good?
Yes.
Alrighty, I'm waiting on Bruce, he said he'll be just a minute.
No problem.
They're, uh, that's through the hospital. They provide. Well, no, the working guy works for tier one, they've been working together. I do know that, uh, Doc, 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 they're not, they're not. The last one's gone, um, but Johnson's been coming to the center of all meetings. But the working guy.
Eric Bean, he may.
You know I'm supposed to. Alright, we got everybody here, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, the opening session, moment of solace will be given by Rick Dotson, and the pledge of allegiance will be given by Mitch Stonecifer.
Let us stand. Everybody, please recognize your moment of solace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, number four, approval of the bench from the September sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting, uh, all those should have been emailed out. Need a motion? Motion by Wayne Taylor, second by Rick Dotson, all in favor? Uh, opposed? Motion passes. Uh, additions or deletions to proposed agenda?
I'd like to add that we consider approving, uh, giving our sports some a thousand dollars for each one of them. Like the softball, basketball, I know the tech girls, uh, sure there's been having to drive to tech and paying their own way too, and they're about out of money. We talked about that back in March, and he's going to try to wait until when our budget was done.
Alright, we got a motion to consider approval, a thousand dollars for sports teams. Second by Dolph Stahl, um, all in favor? Or any other additions or deletions? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll have that item number sixteen. Uh, item number six, approval of the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting agenda? Need a motion? Motion by German Hicks, second by Mitch Stonecifer, all in favor? Uh, opposed, motion passes. Uh, executive action items, approve the following bench for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, Microsoft three sixty-five, eight-three subscription license for sixteen thousand, four forty-nine oh-six from S H I. Need a motion to approve that?
I don't like that.
Motion by German Hicks, second by William Abston, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Uh, consent agenda items, we'll do all these together. Uh, letter of resignation from Sonya Kelly, effective nine-seven twenty-one. Letter of resignation from Cheryl Cobble, effective nine-twenty twenty-one. Letter of retirement from Lydia Flat, effective eight-thirty-one twenty-one. Letter of resignation from Rhonda Smith, effective nine-twenty-six twenty-one. Letter of resignation from Jerinda Hummel, effective nine-twenty-seven twenty-one. Livingston Academy Beta Club field trip, eleven eighteen twenty-one through eleven twenty twenty-one, to Gaylord Opera Night Hotel in Nashville. Livingston Academy Girls Basketball Trip to play in Christmas Basketball Tournament in Leann Haven, Florida, twelve twenty-six twenty-one through twelve twenty-nine twenty-one. Need a motion for the consent items?
Maybe we approve the consented during items.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer?
That's second.
Second by Bruce Hudgens, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, on to new business, approve board policy one point eight oh one one, emergency closings, uh, that was in the packet, uh, also, um. Well, first of all, let's get a motion and a second, and we'll discuss this. Motion by Rick Dotson?
Taken.
Who was that? Taken by Mitch Stonecifer, um, so we'll go into discussion, and I'll explain this. So I met with Dr. Holman and, uh, Wayne Sales and talked about this. Uh, everybody knows in the past, this was brought up last meeting, about the closure for schools, high school sports were still able to play, middle school sports there were, had to, were canceled. So we met and kind of looked at the best situation scenario for everybody, uh, so everybody, does everybody have a copy or didn't get a copy? So, uh, the highlighting area says, uh, if schools is not in session or is dismissed early due to snow, inclement weather, or illness, the executive committee shall determine if scheduled activities in which students are involved shall be postponed or canceled based on activity scheduled being made up or consequence if activity is canceled. The reason we put that verbiage in there is, one, we were, hey, everybody's canceled or everybody can play, but it was brought up that from a high school level, that there's some T double S double A games that are district or region, and it could get to the point where if they don't play those games, that can knock them out of the playoffs, it can knock them out of the state tournament. So, the reason we put executive committee, at the end of the day, the director makes the decision, whoever the chairman is, they'll communicate to the board and say, hey, everything's closed, nobody's playing anything, or everything's closed, high school basketball has to play because it's a region game, uh, so the communication will come from the chairman, the decision will come from the director. So, that's where we landed on that, that way it's fair and consistent across the board. Uh, Dr. Holman says that he will do everything in his power, that if it doesn't affect or have a negative consequence to a sport, that we will close, if it's especially caused of sickness or weather and safety issues, so. You got anything to add to that?
Sounds good.
Anybody have any issues with the way that's worded? Alright, if not, then I'll make it, or, we already got a motion and a second, so.
I just, real quick, uh, no, no matter, uh, who the executive committee is, uh, I, I just ask that we stay consistent with whichever route it is. Whoever that executive committee be at that time, this arise, I just want us all to be on the same page and keep it consistent as we can.
So, at me as chairman, going forward, next year, the director makes the decision, lets the chairman know, they communicate it out, that way if the board gets questions, hey, why so-and-so playing, this is why they have to play.
And expand on that, I, I, I don't, I mean, we all want wins and the win cause, but I think that priority should be placed on safety of the students and the attendees, so.
Absolutely, awesome. Alright, so that's all that one, so all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Uh, not, item number two, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two voluntary pre-K grant revision one. Uh, all of these revisions that we're gonna go over, uh, I know we have to do it one by one, uh, and vote on them, but all the revisions is basically changing line item to odd item, everything balances out, I talked to, uh, Crystal about it today. So, everything balances, it's just moving line item to odd item to get it for the correct line, is that correct?
It's a carryover.
Okay, um, so we'll do item number two, motion for it. Motion by Rick Dotson, second by William Abston, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Uh, number three, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Title One A revision one, need a motion? Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by William Abston, all in favor?
Real quick, real quick, uh, that one has a pretty large increase, is that just carryover?
Yes, they, yeah, I think, uh, most of it is probably gonna be carryover.
Alright, thank you.
Sorry, uh, you're good. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Uh, item four, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Title Two A revision, motion?
Yes.
By German Hicks, second by Wayne Taylor, all, or any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, passes. Uh, item five, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Title Four Revision, motion? Rick Dotson, second by Dolph Stahl, discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Number six, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Carl Perkins Revision One. Motion by Dolph Stahl, second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item seven, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two I D E A Part B Revision One. Motion by Rick Dotson, second by William Abston, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Number eight, approve twenty twenty-one through, is that supposed to be twenty twenty-two, it says twenty twenty-five. Alright, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two I D E A Preschool Revision One, uh, motion? William Abston?
Second.
Second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Number nine, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two CARES Act Esser Original Budget. Motion by Mitch Stonecifer? Uh, second by Rick Dotson, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any, uh, motion passes. Um, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Esser two point oh, no, I already said that, no, that's, sorry. Esser two point oh, original budget. Need a motion for that? Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by German Hicks, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Esser Planning Grant Original Budget. Motion Mitch Stonecifer, second, Rick Dotson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Uh, twelve, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two A R P I D E A Grant Original Budget. First we'll put all these on here. Uh, motion by William Abston?
Second.
Second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item thirteen, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Coordinated School Health Revision One, need a motion?
Yes.
Motion by German Hicks, second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item fourteen, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two H Q I M Literacy Implementation Network Grant Original Budget, need a motion? Motion by William Abston, second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item fifteen, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Voluntary Pre-K Grant Revision Two, need a motion? Motion by William Abston?
Second.
Second by Alice Reed, any discussion?
What's the difference between the two, Crystal?
I think the second one, they had to move some money for a new computer, it's all in that one.
Alright, alright, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider approval, a thousand dollar for sports teams, need a motion?
I don't like that motion.
Motion by Rick Dotson, second by Dolph Stahl, uh, we'll go into discussion. Uh, I printed this up real quick for everybody, uh, I know we've been talking about it for a while, and, uh.
It was, it was a tough year on sports, actually, they didn't have many people come out, they didn't have much fundraising opportunities, and I just, I know they struggled along, we talked, and talking softball, basketball wasn't really part of their field.
Uh, so, I, I, I kind of took everything, and Crystal helped me kind of get all the sports programs together, there's a lot more out there than I, I missed a few when I did my notes, but, uh, I just did different options, you look at all at twenty-five hundred, and you look at high school at twenty-five, others at a thousand, uh, you made a motion at a thousand, which, uh, we'll go through, one, two, three.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, so there's a total of forty-five, uh, functions, that's across all high school and middle school, uh, so with a thousand dollars, that'll cost us forty-five thousand dollars, uh, to give everybody a thousand dollars. Um, I just did these options, that was before I knew he was gonna bring up the thousand dollars, um, you know, you kind of look at the options, um, high school at a thousand, others at five hundred. Um, I know some, you know, a lot of them got hit by the pandemic last year with the attendance, they couldn't have, you know, a lot of people in attendance, and it was limited to their concessions. Uh, this year, a little bit different, some of them will get a habit, especially going into basketball season, but with the football renovations going on, uh, the bands really suffered, I know as well, because they're having to travel and can't get concessions over there, so, I mean, if the board wants to approve the thousand, then that's up to you all, but those are other options, if you wanted to look, um, across the board. Obviously, if we did twenty-five for everybody, that's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that's way, that's a lot of money.
And, on that right there, I completely agree that we need to help them too, but that's the reason, back at the beginning of last year, I brought up the thing to give money to some of the schools and teachers and all of that, because the teachers have been hurting also, because they didn't have any fundraising last year for any projects that they wanted to do also, and we were waiting to see how our budget fell, to see if we could actually give money there, and I allowed a big enough amount to go to each school that they could do a lot of the stuff with the sports teams.
Yeah, and I brought that up today when we were having a discussion earlier, and, uh, I'll touch on it right now, real quick, but, uh, uh, the, the financial auditor said we need to stay away from doing anything grant-related, uh, but they did recommend that if we decided to do something like that, we need to do it on a per pupil basis, uh, a next dollar amount per pupil based on the school size, and I think they were gonna get back with us and tell us what their recommendation on the dollar amount per pupil was, am I correct on that? Uh, so, once they get back with us, then, you know, we'll kind of look at doing something too for the schools, and, um.
That's fair, personally, that's fair.
So, and you can look at this and do, I mean, whatever you want, or if you want to go with the recommendation that Rick made at a thousand per, uh, sports, and I couldn't honestly sit here and tell you which one of them got impacted worse than the other.
I couldn't either.
You know, I do know the ban is brought up about, you know, they're having to go buy gas to go to tech to even play their home games, and I know the cheer team doing the same thing, and, um, obviously, the boys and girls basketball have fundraisers for football, and a football, they'll get the concessions for basketball, uh, but, uh, so, you know, you do one, you gotta do all, I guess, and kind of make it consistent across the board, but, you know. Any other discussion on this, or?
I, I get one, uh, personally, I, I don't think, I don't think a thousand dollars is enough, uh, as long as we can afford it, uh, by this sheet we have here. Uh, I mean, personally, I would, I would prefer to go with option A or option B, um, I know that's a lot of money, but as long as we can afford it and have it to, to do, uh. That's just, I, I think that's our best option, me personally, I, I just, I don't think a thousand dollars is enough.
And that comes down to what can we afford?
That's true.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're looking at, you know, his first recommendation was a thousand, which is forty-five, you look at option D, that's close at forty, that's fifteen hundred for the high school, a thousand for middle school, if that's, you know, not enough, then C, that's twenty-five hundred for all high school, uh, then all others are five hundred. Or if we want to take it on the work session, I know it's gonna put it off another month, but kind of determine which sports is more impacted by others, I don't know that I want to go through all that, but.
And then, what we're not taking into consideration on this right here too, is what you said about the per, per pupil. Some of these are, have more people on the teams than others, like the Wilson team might not have as many as the Richmond team has on there.
True.
Is this a one-time or recurring?
One time.
Uh, it'll be a one-time thing, Mr. Gilpatrick.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forget your voice is there.
The only idea, idea I would have is if, I, I would like to move on it tonight, if not, then maybe let the athletic director weigh in on it, and maybe give some kind of recommendation if we were to wait beyond tonight, but, but, like Rick, I think that, you know, time is of the essence for some of these sporting events, and the teams, they need the, the support now.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to see us move on tonight if we can come to a agreement, because I know some of them really struggling.
Just personally, my vote would be with B.
I'm sorry.
I thought B would be my vote.
B?
I mean, I know that's more than the forty-five hundred, but if we can afford it. Forty-five thousand, I'm sorry. Subtracted, I think you wrote there.
But it also does come down to what can we afford.
They gave us options.
They did give us options.
I mean, we, we've, we've got some savings this year, but I've got some detail of what we need to look for in the future too, so.
We do have savings.
Uh, while we're talking about that, I'll go ahead and cover this. Um, I met with Crystal today, trying to find my papers here. Here they are. I'll wait till everybody gets a copy. Everybody got one down there, Bruce, you good? Uh, so this isn't exact to the dollar, this is just an estimate, uh, so basically, we're looking at a total of a two million dollar savings. Uh, a lot of that's driven by some of the Esser money that we have, obviously, we spent that for some things and actually kind of saved on our G P budget, um, so, but, you know, we, we kind of looked in advance, so things to kind of look forward to going in the future, um, teacher minimum raise that we had this year from the state that went from thirty-six to thirty-eight, you know, that's costing us another four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, the support staff raises that we approved this year that took effect in July, that's about three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, there's some insurance recommendations that's coming out, uh, that we'll probably be talking about in the next month or two, it's about, uh, you know, being equitable across the board from certified to non-certified. Uh, if we do that, then that's gonna cost us about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, then the state is considering another increase from the thirty-eight minimum to the forty thousand dollar minimum, that's not set in stone, but it's actually in conversation right now. If that was to pass, that'll be in effect, obviously, next year's budget, uh, so that'll be another four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And I know we had talked in the past about doing a local teacher raise, uh, as well, and I think, you know, it's all well deserved, and just throwing some numbers together, a two percent right off the top, it costs us about two hundred and ninety-four thousand. Now, all these will be reoccurring year over year, uh, so that's about two point one million dollars that'll be reoccurring if all that falls into place. Um, now, there is a lot of conversation on the state levels, everybody knows, Governor Lee's asked about, you know, redoing the B E P formula, we don't know what that's gonna impact or look like, hopefully, it's gonna be a positive, we hope. Uh, but, you know, we, we did have the savings this year, but just keep in mind, going forward, there's, there's gonna be a lot of reoccurring things that's in the future too, so, I just want to share that with everybody.
Well, I would like to see that if we pass this right here at this meeting, that next meeting, we have that per pupil basis and do something for the teachers also.
Well, I mean, if we do the per pupil basis, that'll go to the schools.
Yeah.
Uh, then when you say teachers, are you talking about teacher raids?
No, I'm talking about, uh, in the classroom money, because they didn't get to have the fall festivals and stuff like that, that they would use to raise money for different classroom supplies. Because I know our teachers already spend a lot out of pocket to get supplies throughout the year, so.
And that's where we had talked today, and we were waiting on their recommendation to come back from the per pupil, uh, basis, because obviously, you got, you know, Livingston Academy, you give them the same as you do A H Roberts, and that's not very equitable, you know, across the board based on number of students, so, uh, but, yeah, as soon as we get that data back, we can, yes, sir.
When you all asked me earlier, can we, can we afford this, I had this on my mind, so, there was just too much on my mind for me to really speak at one time, so, uh, I, I think you can see now why I paused a second ago on the, on answering that, so. But I definitely want to see the sports people get what they, you know, what they need, and I'm like you all, I'd like, I'd like to see you all act on it tonight, if that's what you decide to do.
I'm good with any plan you have to go with, I just know we need to help them.
Um, I, I, I'm, I'm like Alice, I, I prefer probably plan B, uh, and looking at it overall, I mean, you're talking like a quarter percent of our budget. That's a whole year, and we're falling under that, yes, we have that savings right now, next year, we may not, that's why I'd rather go ahead and do it now, instead of prolonging.
So, option, so if we do, is everybody looking at option B?
Well, there's a motion on the table for.
Uh, yeah, I know, we'll have to rescind that, so, I was, I was gonna make sure there's no other discussion on, any other options?
And, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with option B also, but I just want to make sure that next meeting, we have something going for the teachers and the schools.
Uh, in, in regard to that, I'm, I'm fine with money going to school, but I would prefer the money to go to the principal of the school, and with the principal, delve out the money, uh, to the school, as he, that person sees fit for the school, as opposed to each teacher getting a certain amount of money per classroom, I think that's the role of the principal, and I'd like to see that executed in that fashion.
I believe that's what we had in mind for this.
Okay. Alright, so if we're looking at option B, uh, do you know who made the, say, I didn't.
It was Dolph, he made the second.
Dolph has made the second, so Dolph, can I get you to rescind your motion?
Yes.
Uh, he rescinds the second, you rescind the first?
Yes.
Uh, so that motion's off the table, uh, so now we'll take a new motion, uh, to approve option B, which is twenty-five hundred dollars for high school, and all others will be a thousand dollars, a total of seventy-two thousand dollars. So, we have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alice Reed, second by Rick Dotson, uh, that is spending money, so let's take a roll call on that one.
Uh, Bruce Hudgens?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Dolph Stahl?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
German Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick? Mike Gilpatrick?
Mike, can you hear us? Hey, Mr. Gilpatrick?
Yes, I can hear you, Mike.
Okay, hey, hey, we, we rescinded the original motion for a thousand dollars for all sports teams, uh, we remotion for twenty-five hundred dollars for high school sports, a thousand dollars for all other, uh, and we're doing a roll call, and it's up to you now.
Yes.
Thank you. That'd be ten four zero, opposed, motion passes.
Alright, so that's all for, uh, that's number sixteen, uh, now we'll go to special recognition, O C A, Mr. Jennifer Oliver's here.
Good evening. Hope everybody had resting, restful fall break, we're ready to get back at it. Uh, just wanted to bring, well, actually, two things, uh, Mr. Hayes alluded to the governor's special session, well, his intent to look at the B E P. Uh, as you know, we are forty-sixth in the nation. Uh, as you know, we are forty-sixth in the nation in the state of Tennessee for funding our schools. And I think that's really sad that we're in the very bottom. So, I'm very hopeful that when they look at the BEP, they see that a formula that is three decades old is outdated and needs to be reconsidered and schools aren't actually funded the way that they're run. The other thing that I would like to bring to your attention is you mentioned the new pay scale that had to go into effect to raise certain salaries to meet a state minimum. And I just wanted to call your teachers on the fact that there's a large faction of the teachers that did not receive any increase in funding or a raise at all because of their degree, their degrees and their years' experience. And so, I think that's something you need to consider and look into, because if a large group on the pay scale is gonna get something, it's gonna feel pretty, pretty hard on the teachers that have been here the longest and have the highest amount of education, that we get nothing. And I do understand that those other div- divisions have to be increased. But I guess the question is, do you want to be the county that pays the absolute minimum that you have to pay to everybody? Because if you don't increase everybody, then those higher divisions that have had more years' experience and more education, you're paying them the absolute bare minimum that you have to. That's just something to think about. Do we wanna be the county that pays the teachers the least they actually have to? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. All right, so that's everything on there at this point. I'll take, make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rick Dodson, second by Dophus Dow, all in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Mo- meeting's adjourned. Uh, need a break or roll on in the work session? Roll on, roll on, okay, so we'll go to our work session. Uh, so item number one, discuss football stadium updates. So, we've got all the goodies to hand out. And Mr. Gilpatrick, this is the, uh, I emailed this to you, I think you looked at it as you were at the meeting with me.
Yes.
So. Everybody got a copy? So, we had a meeting on September thirtieth for a budget review update. Um, uh, myself, Mr. Gilpatrick was here, Dr. Holman, Steve Mosley, uh, the architects and the TTL survey group. Uh, so we were kinda getting an update on where we are on the budget. Uh, the next page will kinda tell you, uh, the proposal back in twenty eighteen that we first started this conversation uh, was four and a half million dollars, that's what the board approved last year, uh, when we went into this, obviously, that was twenty eighteen numbers. Um, I did a little bit of research and kinda eighteen to nineteen, building cost inflation went up six percent. Nineteen to twenty, it went up seven, then twenty-one to twenty-one went up eleven, so you kinda compound those year over year. Uh, that four point five we approved now looks like four point six, just based on standard inflation. Um, plus, we added, you know, the two-story building, uh, we talked about using it for a classroom. Uh, talked about having it storm shelter certified since it was used for a classroom. Uh, obviously, we had to have, you know, additional site work and stuff for that, uh, you know, new proposals, wall of fame, scoreboard, things of that nature. Uh, the next page shows you where it came in, uh, don't stroke, cause Mr. Gilpatrick and I about did. Um, so, uh, the rip, the budget came in on everything we had, eight million dollars. So, at that point, we started going back and, uh, where can we cut, what can we do, you know, things of that nature, so, um, Mr. Holman was very instrumental that day as far as helping us kinda go through. Uh, the next page kinda tells, tells you what we, uh, discussed as far as getting the cost down. Uh, we looked at the home side bleachers, currently today, we're at eighteen hundred. Uh, we originally planned it going to twenty-five, we cut that back down to two thousand. Uh, and we cut the visitors from a thousand to seven hundred. Uh, so just by doing that, saved us about two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the field house, originally, we had it to be paved all the way around the field house and up around where that big hole is down there now, uh, for some additional parking. Um, taking that out of the equation, we're sorry, go ahead.
On, regarding the bleacher size, can we upgrade that, let's say in five years, we think we need more seating capacity? Can it be modified at that point or not?
I don't know that it can be modified for the current structure, but the more can be added off, you know, to the difference. I don't know about them connecting, I couldn't honestly answer that to you, but I'm sure they could be added beside.
Okay. Separate structure.
Yes. Um, so the field house, if we just pave the field house over and leave the current area there, that saves us another two hundred thousand. Uh, the walkway around the football field, uh, we were gonna concrete all that. If we use asphalt instead of concrete, that'll save four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so we're looking at doing asphalt and not concrete. Um, the concession restroom area, uh, that building size will be reduced because when they, when an architect sets the number of restroom stalls needed, you have to have so many per male, so many per female. So, when we reduce the capacity of the home and visitor, that reduces the number of units in the restroom that needed as well. Uh, so that concession area actually came down a little bit because of the restrooms. Um, the top portion of that, we originally was gonna have it as a, uh, weight room, then a small event center. Uh, just by making it a little bit more narrow and longer and leaving it all open for a weight room. Obviously, we won't have an event center, but it'll be a, a full weight room or other functions if they wanna use it in the future also. Uh, that'll save four hundred thousand dollars. Um, the storm shelter, we were gonna have to have a storm shelter requirement because that event center, we thought while we were doing it, let's go ahead and get it certified by the state, that way we can have class there. Now, state law says that if you go over twelve hours per week, you have to have it certified by the state. Uh, football, basketball, anybody that uses the weight room currently today, and it's a credit for the kids, it's an hour and a half a day, five days a week. That's seven and a half hours a week. It doesn't have to be state certified. In the future, if somebody wanted to hold a full-blown class out there and it goes over twelve hours a week, it's gotta be state certified. Since we were gonna have it state certified, you had to have the restrooms underneath as a storm shelter. You're gonna have to go from eight foot, or I'm sorry, eight inch block to twelve inch block, more reinforced steel down in that area just because of storm shelter issue. By not doing the storm shelter certification and leaving just the weight room on top, that saved a half million dollars. Um, then, uh, the fees, the overhead, the profit, insurance, all of that is percentage based on the total cost. Uh, by reducing everything else, that saved us another four hundred thousand dollars. So, that put us around the five point nine million dollar mark. So, if you look back, you know, originally, based on inflation, we're at five point six, this got us to around five point nine. Uh, so here's an example, I just took what they proposed us and kinda plugged in the numbers based on what I just talked about. Uh, this is about where it comes out at. Uh, now, Mr. Chaney said there possibly will be some extra savings in the lighting because when you reduce the bleacher capacity, uh, the height of it'll actually come down, so therefore, the lighting won't have to be as tall. Uh, so there possibly could be some more savings in there due to the lighting. Uh, Dr. Holman and myself have a conference call Thursday with the bleacher company. Uh, there's a company called Sourcewell that has a contract for bleachers. If we have a conference call and we talk to them ourselves with the help from the architect, there's money savings. We talked to the lighting company, we got a call with them on Thursday also, and we talked to them ourselves and go through them since they're contracted. Uh, there's some more savings there also. So, we're having those calls, I think, at nine-thirty and ten on Thursday. Uh, so, the five point nine is where we are, hopefully, there's gonna be a little bit more based on the lighting and things of that nature. Uh, then, at the back, the next steps, the architect going back, they went back and redid the reductions, uh, that we talked about, Haley had sent us the revised model, uh, out there. Uh, fire marshal review, uh, when you, they review with a fire marshal, it could take up to six weeks, I talked to her this afternoon. Uh, she said with us not doing a stor- storm shelter, uh, that six-week timeframe could be condensed quite down, you know, quite, quite a bit. Uh, the bidding contract negotiations could be six weeks at the longest, it depends on if they have to get into negotiations with a contractor. Final bids would be February sixteenth, possibly the first week of January, uh, pending fire marshal. Now, that could be pushed back into first of December, you know, if the fire marshal says it's gonna take me a week and not six weeks. Uh, or if the contractors, they don't have to have any negotiations and it's gonna take two weeks and not six weeks. Uh, so that's kinda floating depending on the fire marshal and, um, the conversations they have with the, with the contractor and the bidding. Uh, the intent is to have everything completed by the August football season, I asked that question today. Uh, you know, their concern is the lead times on the materials, uh, you know, they're gonna do everything in their power, you know, this structure, and we have to go to a different one without adding any cost. Uh, if they say, hey, it's five months on lead time on steel or whatever, then they're gonna do their best to kinda get all that done. Uh, once the bids come in, uh, if they're between the five and a half and the five point nine number, at that point, since the board only approved four point five, we're gonna have to come back together and reapprove that number. Uh, I didn't want us to sit here tonight and say, let's approve a five point nine, then it comes back in at six, or, you know, uh, so, right now, I told them to go ahead and do the work, go ahead and bid it. Once we get the bids in, then I can call the board back together and we can kinda make a decision there. You know, without prolonging anything, if we wanna try to get this done, uh, it may, we may have to call emergency meeting, just say, hey, let's meet over here and vote on this one item. Uh, hopefully, the time will work out where it'll be a normal meeting, uh, but, you know, that's kinda where we stand right now, it's kinda floating timeline, so. Any questions on this? We'll try to save all we can. All right, so if there's no other questions on that, I've lost my work session here. Um, number two, JROTC updates. I promise, this is the last piece of paper I'm gonna hand out. So, I know we've talked about this several times, last year and this year. Um, I had Ms. Riddle, uh, or Dr. Holman had Ms. Riddle kinda lead this, uh, lead this up. Uh, she did a great job, I think Brent helped out with the survey, uh, so they actually surveyed everybody seventh grade through twelfth grade. That way, it kinda gives us the upcoming kids that are gonna be in high school in the next couple of years, uh, their thoughts on a JROTC program. Four hundred and thirty-six students responded. Uh, question one, what grade are they currently in, you can look at those numbers. Uh, question two, um, if, if it was offered at Livingston Academy, would they be interested? We had a hundred and thirty, uh, that said they would, so, uh, that was thirty percent that responded, said they would be interested in it. Um, would they consider JROTC as a program of study if it was offered? A hundred and fourteen said they would. Uh, are you considering military as an option after high school? This was really surprising to me, twenty-four percent of them said they were actually considered military as an option after high school, so, uh, with the JROTC program, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the last time I looked at it, you needed a hundred students or ten percent of your total student base, I think we're at nine sixty, so ninety-six to a hundred is about where we need it to be. Uh, we have to submit an application to JROTC to get approved. Once we get approved, we have to maintain the hundred students or the ten percent year after year, or the program will be pulled. Uh, if it's approved, the district, they'll be put on a waiting list. I mean, there, there could be openings right now, there could be fifty school waiting lists, we don't know that until we do an application and ask. Uh, but with the requirements, we must hire a retired officer and one retired non-commissioned officer to be the instructors for that JROTC program. Uh, the classroom size, we gotta have that available, of course, we'll have to figure out the details and everything as we go. Um, then the funds, uh, JROTC, they fund half salary for the, um, officer instructor, the NCO instructor. Uh, they provide the course materials and the uniforms, if I'm not mistaken, uh, so we would only be out at half salaries for those two. Uh, so, you know, it looks like we've got enough interested, um, for that within the, you know, seventh, the tenth grade upcoming. Uh, if the board would like to, I mean, we would put it on the agenda for November for us to go ahead and do the application process to get approved, and at that point, we could see, hey, is it available in six months, a year, whatever the case may be. So, if that's something the board wants to do, then, uh, we could put that on the November agenda to vote to approve, to do the application.
What did all that?
Okay. So, we'll put that on the agen- agenda for next month to approve. Then item number four, I'll let Dr. Holman take that one.
So, someone had mentioned to me the athletic trainer contract, uh, so I, I kinda researched that and looked into it, and I tried to. So, uh, I, I tried to determine what, uh, what concerns that we did have with it and, uh, and I set up a meeting like for last Thursday with Tim McGill, uh, and I, I went and met with him about, um, about, I guess you could say, filling the gap. Our athletic trainer, uh, it's understandable that one trainer can't be at every athletic event, every, uh, practice and athletic event. So, I, I went and spoke with him about our concern for that. Um, and then, and then today at, um, about, later on today, he sent me an email and, uh, and that's included in your packet. I think it's in your packet, and then the, pretty much the summation of it is, is they don't have an athletic trainer right now, they're looking for one, but in the absence of one, they have made arrangements to make sure that the director of the sports physical medicine, uh, will be at the games and, and then there's quite a bit more information in there that I wanted you to see, so.
Yeah. And I think somebody had brought, wanted to bring that up to the school, so you.
Yeah, it was me.
Yeah.
See, yeah, that was some of the feedback from the community that were presented to me, and the concern is the amount of sideline coverage for some of the events. Um, and for instance, football, basketball, yes, but maybe some of the soccer. And so, my question was, and I presented that in an email to the board and to the direct, to, to Dr. Holman, is could we poll the coaches to find out are they having their needs met or not? And then, um, and then possibly could Livestock Regional provide us with a monthly report of attendances? You know, of games or, you know, that they were able to cover and of any injury reports? And so, those were the two things that, you know, based upon feedback from, from folks in the community that presented it to me.
Well, I can, uh, I can poll the, poll the coaches and I'll, I'll get that.
It may be a non-issue, you know, but it's based on objective, you know, feedback.
I, I do know with the football especially, there was some issues with, there were some gaps spring going into there earlier this year, and, um, they didn't have nobody at one time, and.
No, and.
I talked to Coach Flatt, he was taping kids himself, and.
Well.
And I understand it's a free service they provide to us, you know, and, um, and I also understand they can't be at every single thing, but it's a, to your point, I mean, there's other sports too that need coverage and may not be getting.
Right. And that's what I was asking about, is to make sure that we had someone, that we wouldn't, uh, tie down exclusively to just one is what I had in mind. Cause I wanted, I wanted there to be, uh, if they were at one event and then we had someone else that was able to come to another one, I was looking at, uh, seeing, seeing if that would be a possibility.
Right, and, and, and they do, you know, and I do appreciate the, the relationship that we have with Livestock Regional and what service they provide for the school system. Uh, you know, they help us with our, during the physicals and things like that. But, um, you know, we, this is an agreement that they entered into and that they would provide coverage, sideline coverage, and there was concern in the community that not all events were getting the same coverage. Uh, for instance, soccer may not be getting the same attention that football and more higher-profile events, basketball, we're getting, so. We just, you know, my concern is, are the kids getting the attention that they need for every sport? Especially the high, potential for high-impact collisions and, and injuries.
And apparently, there was a, an agreement signed that I don't recall as a board vote on it, but back in twenty sixteen, and there's no actual date or anything on it, but, I didn't even know there was an agreement out there.
Yeah.
So, we can, we can poll the coaches and we'll kinda get feedback from them.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I apologize, I was looking at number four, but I said that was you, so. Uh, now, number four is the, uh, discuss technology plan.
Yes. So, everyone, uh, I gave you a packet, uh, with a paperclip on it, and if you'll go to, to the second page of that, that's our, uh, five-year strategic plan that we, uh, worked on and finalized in June. And there's, and I look at that document as something that kinda guides our, our system to an extent. And I was wanting also for you all to see that, that we as, uh, central office staff here were working on this. Uh, what I have in mind is, is looking at this, uh, there's the different goals in it. I was gonna take one goal at a time and, uh, address that goal with, with you at a board meeting one at a time. I was gonna take one goal at a time and, uh, address that goal with, with you at a board meeting, one at a time. Uh, so if you'll turn to page four in that, um, I have Mr. Thrasher here with us tonight. And, uh, he and I have worked to develop, um, a, a technology plan for, uh, a five-year technology plan. And what I was gonna do is, uh, I was just gonna, I have, uh, each one, A through E, I have a, an action step for each one of those. And I thought if you all, uh, felt that this was good, we might approve it at the next meeting. So I'll, I'll read one and then, uh, and then I'll have Mr. Thrasher to just explain what the action step is for that. Uh, the director of schools will overhaul the operation of the technology department and will make any staff changes or additions that are necessary to successfully build an excellent technology department for the school system.
Uh, Dr. Holman and I discussed this, uh, action step we kind of decided on. If he, uh, wanted, he expressed that he would like to kind of, uh, have me kinda take the lead there as coordinator and, uh, to kinda help guide and direct, uh, that, you know, the actions of the technology department. And we thought that that would help, uh, kinda make things more efficient and kind of help, uh, you know, uh, make sure that things are being done on time and, and, uh, supporting the, the district. Um, um, we would also be, you know, and doing that, helping to improve the communication between, uh, you know, that department and the schools. So just kinda working on logistics there.
And what I have in mind for, uh, for Mr. Thrasher is, uh, right now he's an instructional coach that works, has a lot of emphasis on technology and professional development. And, uh, and I'd like for him to continue that, but I'd also, I'd like to change, convert him over, as you might say, to a coordinator where he really does more oversee for our whole district and has, uh, and, and eventually I'd like to, uh, to, when he finishes his degree, I, I'd like to see him, I'd like to maybe transfer him into the central office here, just as a transfer, you know. So, um, Brent really does a good job and I, I definitely appreciate, I think the whole system greatly appreciates all that he does for us, so. It, we'll move on down to B. Um, the director of schools will develop a five-year plan for the board's approval focused on technology needs for student, staff, data, and inventory of current software and hardware, projections for technology needs for the future annually, physical accountability for use of ESSR and other grant expenditures, and technology grant opportunities.
On that, uh, part B, uh, you can see there's three main bullets there. The first part, um, we are with our ESSR funds out of ESSR two point oh, we've purchased a program called Glimpse. And Glimpse is going to help us, uh, determine our return on investment on these programs. In the past, we've looked at usage to kinda guide us and, you know, what programs are being used by the teachers the most and, and, you know, um, whether or not we renew those programs. Um, but with Glimpse, we'll be able to see not only who's using what, but we'll also see, um, did that really impact achievement of our students? And so was that really worth investment? Or even if, you know, we're spending all of our time working in this one program, if it doesn't impact achievement, then we need to shift our focus, uh, over to something that does. So, um, that'll help us meet that first portion of that goal. The second part was, uh, uh, looking at, um, our assets in the district, uh, putting up where our technology is. Uh, where do we need to, um, uh, invest in new technology? Um, in the past, this has kinda been difficult because of everything's done on paper as far as in, in inventory in the past. Um, so, um, over the past couple of years, actually, I've been working to help develop a, uh, inventory database, um, more centralized for our district, uh, it's some, uh, program that we have called Power Apps. And I've developed a couple of, uh, applications that will, uh, help us to do that. So the schools are entering in, uh, as of Ju- July first of this year, they're starting to enter in all items into this centralized database. And, um, whenever we get new items in technology in the technology department, uh, it actually helps to streamline things because we just scan in the barcodes and then the application fills in all that repetitive information like the source funds and all of that that was kinda time consuming in the past. Um, so this kinda takes a little bit of the workload off of the schools and off the IT staff. And also what it is gonna allow us to do going forward is we'll be able to, um, look and see, well, you know, uh, we bought X number of computers for whatever school, you know, and, and we can kinda look at those numbers and see where does that need as we're going forward? When we need to, uh, you know, refresh that. And that kinda leads me to the, the third bullet, uh, which is, uh, I would like for us to, as a district, to kinda start thinking about working in a, a refresh cycle. So, you know, as we've kind of been in, uh, being one-to-one as a district since about two thousand fifteen or so, um, you know, our computers, we're seeing that it's probably about a four-year, three to four-year life cycle of computers. Um, and, and the past, we've done some purchases at, at the fifth grade level and ninth grade level. Um, and that's done fairly well to kinda supplies, but, you know, it's, I think it would be wise for the district to kinda think about ways to, um, you know, work that into the budget going in the future and, and thinking about refreshing those on a regular basis. Um, but, uh, that was all for it.
On that, look, if I could add one thing here, uh, on the inventory issue there, in the past, every new item that we get, we had to, we would have to fill out a big form on every one. And then it seemed like, I mean, we didn't lose those, but it was definitely a, a kind of a cumbersome, uh, or deal to keep up with that and then make copies of it for all the right people and then some would have the right one and some wouldn't and so forth. But by having it on this, that everyone then will have access to it. The classroom teacher, the office, the IT department, anyone could, anyone could pull up and see if they needed to and they had access. Anyone could pull up and see, uh, anyone else's inventory, you know, if they had access to do so. Uh, it would, we talk about streamlining, I, I can think of when I was in the schools, this would've been a great thing, you know, really a good thing. So, that was my two cents to that on the next. Uh, the next one here, um, the director of schools will provide regular updates using, uh, data regarding professional development training for all staff with technology needs, offerings and results of Title IX training, CKLA implement, implementation and success or a lack of growth, special education services to students in Overton County, and, uh, student performance updates following the use of ESSR funds to prevent learning loss in the school system.
Um, on this section, um, Dr. Holman and I have discussed, of course, you know, I would continue my role as the technology, uh, coach to help and support teachers and provide professional development, support the programs and things that we are purchasing, uh, like for instance, CKLA. Um, of course, there's a large, uh, digital component to the, you know, the upper grades, the Amplify, um, and, and all the other various programs that we, uh, purchase as a district. So we definitely continue to support that through professional development, uh, and work with teachers who, with the various, you know, just the connections and getting their technology to work in the classroom. And also we've worked to, uh, as part of that action step that, um, that we're wanting to, uh, ensure the Title IX compliance. So we've, uh, took some steps to, you know, just kind of document and show the things that the district has done. Um, establishes that, uh, Title IX coordinator or the Title IX contact, we've got that posted on our website now. And that is, uh, posted with also the training, you know, the documentation of the training that we've completed, um, and other information, you know, kind of quick links to the board policies that support Title IX to show that we are in deep compliance there.
And, and one other thing, uh, along with the Title IX, we have compliance videos that all the teachers watch each year. And one of those pertains to Title IX also, so that would, uh, each, each teacher would watch that and it would, uh, we could see, go back years later and see who watched it, who didn't. But that's just one of the many videos that they watch as far as compliance issue. Okay, D, the director of schools will, uh, keep the school board apprised of all technology staff additions, changes, and operation updates in the implementation of the Overton County Schools Technology Plan.
And Dr. Holman and I have kind of agreed on that maybe a bi-annual, uh, update to the board and, um, so maybe something like in June and December, um, an update on where we, where we stand meeting these goals.
We just pick those dates because if we thought, if we just said, we will update you, uh, we might forget. So we said we'll pick, pick two times and that way we'll know when we're supposed to do it.
And I got something on that, maybe we look at maybe a March or April update because if we're talking about refreshing, uh, Chromebooks or things of that nature and something we need to put in the budget, I mean, that March kinda timeframe is kinda when we start working on that. Uh, so maybe, maybe we look at doing that because if you come back in March and say, hey, we'd like to do, you know, five hundred Chromebooks next year, then as a board, we can kinda look at, hey, funding, we need to go into that next year.
That you need to check.
Yeah, to do.
We, we could make that March and, uh, sometime in Fa- uh, March and
Sorry.
I appreciate it. And then the last one here, the director of schools and his staff will develop a, a virtual program option using Tech Trip, a K8 service provider based on the needs of students in Overton County schools and will present a plan for approval to the school board.
And on that section, we're, uh, we're just gonna continue our implementation of the Tech Trip program. We have a hundred licenses, uh, for Tech Trip and that's currently at full capacity. Um, and so we wanna continue that program going forward, um, at its capacity and, um, make sure that need is, uh, met for the community.
And at the beginning of this school, we have a hundred licenses for that. And at the beginning of this school year, um, I've spoke with Wayne about that and I believe we had ninety-five or six students in that. But now we're full, we're, we're up to a hundred and we have two on the waiting list. So that's pretty good, that's pretty, I feel good about that.
I appreciate it. I mean, obviously when we set down the workout, this five-year plan as a board, uh, you know, it's kind of a working document that we go on and, you know, years past, we've done it and it's like, well, we'll look at it next year. But, you know, having these conversations and bi-annual updates, I, I think that's kinda what it's all about. You know, following that direction and that path and, you know, the support you need and you need to kinda make this work, so.
Appreciate Dr. Connie Smith helping with that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, real quick, uh, Brent, what type of degree are you currently trying to achieve? Uh, or going to achieve almost later on?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, uh, I have an instructional leadership certification. Currently I'm a master's in, uh, educational technology, basically pretty long construction right now.
You're currently a master in educational technology?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. And that's right, I've got, that way I sound smarter than talking about that. With this plan though, what I'd like to do is maybe next month, uh, or it is my intent, let's say that. Next, next month, maybe we could do goal, uh, two or go, do one of the other goals and go over that. And that way we're, we're not just, we, Connie, Connie Smith has, like you said, worked so hard on this. We wanna make this a good, a good part that guides our system, that guides our, uh, our day-to-day work. So, uh, I was, I was thinking maybe next time we could have Steve Mosley to come and talk to us about the, uh, maintenance and operations and stuff like that. Well, I, I'm not trying to overstep my bounds here, but just remember this is a five-year plan, we don't have to take it all off the deck. I know, but I, I don't see anything to wait, you know, we might as well get it, uh, and kinda get it done, you know, as they say, so.
And this past year has been, has been very challenging and I think that, I think you guys have done phenomenal responding to the pandemic and the extra workload that's been put upon you and you did it short-staffed, you did it without the proper, uh, tools and you, we've had, you had to scramble to, to cover all the need. And I just wanna compliment you and commend you guys on bridging the gap and keeping the district going, uh, with technology. And I think this plan that you've got in place and the active, uh, the action items that you've implemented are gonna help prevent the next time something like this happens, being so far behind the curve. But, but kudos to you and to your team.
Absolutely. Brent really does a good job for us and, and the, and the, and Chris and Chris and, uh, Kelly that worked with him, they, they do a good job for us. They really do.
Alright, item number five, uh, discuss raising food service, uh, EA non-certified teacher subpay to ten dollars an hour. Uh, this was brought up last month about, you know, not being able to find any, uh, subs for, um, especially cafeteria. I know subs for, uh, teacher pay also. I think right now, if I'm not mistaken, is it eight dollars an hour? Uh, so if we look at raising that to ten dollars an hour, we talked about cafeteria, uh, but when we looked at EA's non-certified teacher subs, those are all grouped into that same kinda category at eight dollars an hour. So if we look at the cafeteria, we would need to look at the EA and the non-certified, uh, subs. For the subpay portion, uh, it comes out, I think they get, it rounds up to sixty dollars a day to seven and a half hours times eight dollars an hour. Uh, so if we look at doing that group from eight dollars to ten dollars, uh, something we also need to look at, um, that puts the cert- non-certified sub at, if I'm not mistaken, seventy dollars a day? So it puts the non-certified subs
Sixty, sixty, non-certified sixty right now.
At now, but if we go to ten dollars an hour, it'll put them at seventy-five dollars.
That's great.
So that'll put them at seventy-five. A certified currently today gets
Seventy.
Seventy. So we would need to look at moving that up to, you know, if we keep that difference of ten dollars, it'd be eighty-five or we could go to ninety, depending on what y'all wanted to do. Uh, but just keep in mind, if we move, you know, for the cafeteria, which I think is a big focus, we need to do that whole group. If we move that whole group, then we can look at certified subs also as far as moving it up from seventy to where it needs to be at eighty-five or ninety based on that. So, um, I mean, oh, we can discuss that however and kinda put it on next month if we wanna look at doing that, but.
I think, I think that's good, we need to, that's a good idea right there to raise them.
I'd like to mention something, we need to make sure that our bus drivers are getting their full pay rate when they do extra routes. We're having trouble having sub drivers anyway. And some of these drivers are making their route and then they have to make another route. If we pay them only subpay for this extra route that they're making, then they're losing something like three hundred dollars a month. And I can tell you from experience, bus drivers not exactly getting rich anyway. So we need to make sure that they get their full pay rate even when they're making a extra route.
They're five, five route short now, right by driver.
Right, and all they have to do is just say, ain't gonna do that anymore. And then we would be up a creek and a river. And that's something that just, I guess, Mr. Mosley, they just need to make sure that, hey, if they're doing a right path and they get what pay they're supposed to get, or is that just saying?
We've got, we've got record drivers that do a lot of double routes, that's coming back in, going heck out.
So right now, so right now, we're just paying them subpay.
For the second.
For the second route, which we need to make sure that it goes to
Full pay.
Right.
Their regular pay.
Their regular pay.
It's a fifteen-year driver and he needs to make the same amount doing the same, actually, he should be paid more instead of less, but, but he should be paid at least as, as much.
Uh, so for November, we'll put all this group going from eight to ten dollars an hour. We'll put the bus driver, uh, second route, full pay versus
Per year, what they making now per year?
Versus subpay. Uh, then I guess the next feedback I need from you all is the certified subs. Um, right now they're at seventy, the non-certified would go to seventy-five. So do we wanna keep that ten dollar gap and say, a certified gets eighty-five, or do we wanna kinda push them to ninety? Cause, uh, they're having issues getting them too.
I have a question, is a certified sub have a teaching degree or is it just someone with a college degree?
Teacher. Teacher. Uh, the next probably shouldn't be higher.
Yeah, I mean, right now there's only a ten dollar gap, if I'm not mistaken, it's from sixty to seventy.
Sure, they should, they should make more.
And honestly, I think a ten dollar gap per day is not enough.
No, no. I mean, that's a dollar an hour.
You know, even if you go to ninety, that's a fifteen dollar gap. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to doing ninety-five, make it twenty bucks, I mean, it's, whatever.
That'd be, that'd be a hundred dollars a week if you completed a week as a sub, that'd be a hundred dollars if you, if you done twenty, that'd be a, I mean, that would be, I, I would
Increase.
Increase, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so if you went to ninety bucks, uh, ninety-five, ninety-five, yeah.
I think that's good. I think you could write that down, I think we're on agreement on it. I think that's great.
Okay. Um, so all the food service, EA, non-certified, eight to ten dollars, bus driver, if they run the second route, it'll be full pay versus subpay. And the certified sub will go to ninety-five dollars. Any issues with that? Okay, I got all the notes on that, so. All right, that's all, you got anything else?
The ESAR three-point oh money was actually infrastructure on the building. I'd like to see us start moving on that as quickly because we've got three years to spend that money. And Mr. Gillpatrick had been talking there a while back, you know, I know Hillham's overcrowded, Richmond's overcrowded. I'd like to just put the, it's okay with you, Mr. Sherman, we put a little committee together with Dr. Holman and you, and start looking at that soon.
So I'll get with Ms. Johnson. I know she originally submitted, and that's when we talked about doing the two roofs. We were doing the Richmond area, then I think Mr. Gillpatrick had brought up about the Hillham, which it don't matter to me. Let me get with her first and make sure, can we just kind of change that, or do we need to request? Because they had to get approval on how they spent that. We need to find out if we can change that, and if so, we can kind of get a committee together and meet with her and kind of figure that out and go from there too, so.
It's as soon as a matter.
The state did approve our three-point oh.
Yeah, and what I don't want to do is go back and say, well, we approved this, but now you're spending it on this. And I just want to make sure from her perspective that we don't have to get their approval to do anything that she's already submitted before, so. Mitch, you have anything?
Well, I do, I just want to recognize the Livingston Academy Alumni Association. I think they've done a remarkable job supporting the school with helping build the storage building and the education projects around the school. So I just got to acknowledge them tonight.
Absolutely. You got anything?
I'd like to thank all the people and the teachers and the principal and everything at the Richmond Fall Festival. We had a successful fall festival this year at Richmond School. Appreciate everybody that participated in that.
Ms. Alice, you got anything? One, Charlie, help us.
All right, that's it, appreciate it.